It's nine o'clock. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. For the audience, agendas are in the bookshelf in the back. You'll be having picked up an agenda in the wishman. And roll call, I'd preference this by Lori Lipson is our planning commissioner, and she's attending remotely today. And as such, which we didn't do last time and we should have, is the votes need to be by roll call since you're attending remotely. So we'll do that on all actions. Roll call, Jerry, if you'd note that Bill and Barb are out today. Lori is attending remotely, and Lindell and Deb are both here from the county planning commission to help us meet our numbers. Approval of the November fourteenth minutes. Minutes are published. Anyone have any additions, corrections, deletions? And if not, entertain a motion for approval of the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Motion in second. Any further discussion?
I'm going to abstain because I was not present at the meeting, so I have no basis for approving.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, Jerry, you do roll call for approval.
Rich?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Sig?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Lori.
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Today's agenda has items three through twelve on the consent calendar as it currently stands, and agenda is items one through twenty-two. Anyone have any changes or additions to the agenda? If not, entertain a motion for approval of agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Jerry, roll call.
Rich?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Sig?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Lindell?
Aye.
And Lori? Can you hear us, Lori?
Was that it? Lori, did you hear aye or nay?
Can you hear me?
There we can hear you. Anyway, the motion is for approval of the agenda, and roll call is to you.
I lost my sound.
Well, we have four votes for approving the agenda, so we'll move on. That would be, today's consent calendar is items three through twelve as currently listed. The following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken on all items in accordance with the staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by a planning commissioner, staff member, audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the county board of commissioners will make the final decision. PJ, if you would read items three through twelve of the consent calendar.
Sure. Good morning, PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department. Item number three, conditional use permit review, ninety-eight thirty-five for Kenneth Ray Company LLC to review a single wide manufactured home in a single family residence on the subject property located in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit ninety-eight thirty-five. Item number four, conditional use permit review, twelve thirty for Ruby and Frank Matchik, hopefully I got that name right, to review a vacation rental in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit twelve thirty with eight conditions. Item number five, conditional use permit review fourteen thirty-one for Walter and Barbara Digman to review an existing residence to be used as a temporary residence while building a single-family residence in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit fourteen thirty-one. Item six, conditional use permit review fifteen thirty, Peaceful Valley Hideaway LLC. Arlen Dice is the agent to review an existing residence to be used as a multifamily dwelling in a limited, in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit fifteen thirty with six conditions. Item seven, conditional use permit review fifteen thirty-one, Kelly and Lana Jensen to review, to review living in an existing residence while building a new family residence in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit fifteen thirty-one with six conditions. Item eight, conditional use permit review fifteen thirty-four for Robert and Sheila McLaughlin, McLaughlin, sorry, to review a family cemetery and a subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit fifteen thirty-four with four conditions. Item nine, conditional use permit sixteen thirty-six for Enola Gorman. Patrick Smith is the agent to allow a multifamily dwelling on a subject property in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit sixteen thirty-one to December fifth, two thousand sixteen, planning commission meeting. Item ten, conditional use permit sixteen thirty-eight for Tom and Terry Hagerty to allow a townhome on a subject property in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit sixteen thirty-eight to the December nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, planning commission meeting. Item eleven, conditional use permit sixteen thirty-nine, Troxel Properties LLC. Pam Troxel is the agent to allow a vacation home rental in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit sixteen thirty-nine with sixteen conditions. Item twelve, planned unit development review oh five oh nine, Richard Sturkle, to review an existing planned unit development. Staff recommends to continue the review of planned unit development oh five oh nine to December fifth, two thousand sixteen, planning commission meeting.
Does staff wish to have any items pulled?
No, sir.
Anyone from the planning commission? Lori, do you have audio yet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the planning commission wishing to pull any agenda item? Lori, did you have any items to pull? Lori, did you have any item to pull?
No, I'm sorry. I was just saying yes, that I have audio now.
Okay. Anyone from the audience have wishing to pull any of those items on the consent calendar that just read items three through twelve? If not, entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
Move to approve consent calendar.
Second.
Motion in second. Roll call for...
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Sig?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Lindell?
Aye.
And Lori?
Aye.
Thank you. Consent calendar is approved. Take us to item thirteen.
Good morning, Brittany Molliter, Environmental Planning Supervisor. Item thirteen is a layout plat request, PL sixteen twenty-seven, to combine lots fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen at the Three Forks at Remington Ranch, or the Forks at Remington Ranch. Currently, the property is owned Highway Service District. And if you can see here, they are, they are wanting to combine these three lots to build a large commercial building and parking area. Access to the lots is off of Mill Iron Road, which is a twenty-four-foot-wide paved named road, and that road actually takes access off of Highway sixteen at two locations to the north and to the south. The large parking area will consist of approximately one hundred and forty-five spaces. Sorry, these pictures were taken during the prescribed burn, so you can kind of see it on there. And on November first, two thousand sixteen, the applicant did request the board of commissioners allow the planning director to sign a building permit for the commercial structure to go over the lot line on this property, and that request was granted by the board of commissioners. The applicant has submitted a building permit for that large commercial building. And the layout plat indicates that proposed lot fourteen R will exceed the minimum highway, the minimum lot size for a Highway Service District, so will not need any lot size variance or rezone requirements. The proposed lot fourteen R will consist of one point nine four acres. I actually have that incorrect in my staff report, so it's actually one point nine four acres. It will be zoned, remain zoned, Highway Service District, and the access will be off of Mill Iron Road. So staff is recommending approval of this layout plat with six conditions.
Questions for staff? See the applicants here, any comments? I'm just available for any questions if you have any. Any questions? If not, I guess I'd, any comments from the audience regarding this issue? I would entertain a motion then for approval of the layout plat sixteen dash twenty-one for staff's recommendations? Or alternate motion?
Move to approve layout plat, PL sixteen dash twenty-seven, correct?
Right.
Yes, with six conditions.
With six conditions?
Yes.
With the six conditions.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call vote.
Lori?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Sig?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Lindell?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item fourteen.
Item fourteen is layout plat sixteen twenty-six to reconfigure lot lines in order to create tracks A revised, track B revised, track C revised, and lot thirteen revised in J.S. Johnson subdivision. The applicant's are Pat and Stacy Brown. The surveyor is Ron Davis from Davis Engineering, who is in the audience today. Subject properties consist five point six two acres. Essentially what they're looking to do, if you look at the screen here, the blue hashed mark is the old cul-de-sac position, and they're just looking to reposition it so that the four lots that are pictured there have better access. Lots thirteen was platted in nineteen eighty-two, and tract A, B, and C were created in two thousand and four. With that, we have two different plats, two different sets of notes. Essentially, the biggest concern, or the, not even a concern, the, one thing with this is that we have different things that appear on the two different plats. So the agent and the applicant are going to have to get together during the minor plat submittal and figure out which notes and which statements they're going to include in the next, in the next plat. As far as the lot reconfiguration, no lot is going to increase any more than point zero four acres with the movement of this cul-de-sac. The applicant's proposed lot line adjustment for the relocation of an existing access easement appears not to adversely affect the four subject properties and does not increase density, and this is a layout plat. Therefore, staff recommends approval of layout plat sixteen twenty-six with fourteen conditions.
Questions for PJ?
PJ, is that, this picture here, is this the creek that's surrounding this property?
Yes. And there is floodplain, as you can see on the one-hundred-year and flood, and floodway on all the properties that are pictured.
So the house is far enough away from the floodway?
Correct.
It's in the floodplain, right?
No, it is not. No. Basically, what you see on the screen where it says one-hundred-year floodplain is also the floodway. They basically are one on top of each other. I can pull it up if you'd like.
Yes, please. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess I have a question regarding, it's on the staff report, page six at the bottom in item E.
Uh huh.
I'm just kind of curious on the item three, the ground, bedrock is shallow statement on, that's on there now. I guess I was just kind of curious, is there currently an onsite system on the property? And then I guess, is that appropriate to allow backfill above bedrock? I thought that...
That was done in nineteen eighty-two. That was on lot thirteen. It doesn't appear on the plat for the existing tract A. That, that note was actually removed in the two thousand and fourteen plat.
Okay.
That, that was only for lot thirteen.
Any onsite system would meet current requirement?
Correct. Absolutely.
Where, where is that onsite wastewater system on that picture, please?
Looks like we've got a drain field up here. Is Ron, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And they're relocating the house to that corner, is that to the top?
Nope.
Nope.
Nope, they're only relocating the cul-de-sac. So the blue hashed area is what is existing, and they're just pushing it northeast a little
Lori, any questions for PJ?
Okay, Deb?
And they've got their easement covered that they said? Is that what the paper is in? Where they've changed the private access easement? They have that already?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments from agent or applicant? If there are no other questions, staff's recommendation is for approval of layout plat PL sixteen dash twenty-six with fourteen conditions. Entertain a motion to that effect, or an alternate motion?
Move to approve layout plat, PL sixteen dash twenty-six with fourteen conditions listed.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further comment? Hearing done, roll call vote.
Lori?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Sig?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Lindell?
Yes.
Item fourteen is approved. Item, move on to item six fifteen.
Item fifteen is layout plat sixteen twenty-eight to create tract A of Black Hills Raptor Center Edition. The applicant's are Black Hills Raptor Center. Landowner is Leon and Cheryl Fenhaus, and the surveyor and agent is Ron Davis from Davis Engineering, who again, who's in the audience today. Subject property approximately five point zero six acres. The applicant have applied for this layout plat to subdivide off five acres from an existing unplatted twenty-eight point zero six acre parcel. The existing conditions for the entire lot, for the parent parcel, is twenty-eight acres. It's currently zoned general agriculture. It has a forty-acre minimum, which makes it legal non-conforming. However, with this subdivision, it would lose its legal non-conforming status, as it would be increasing the nonconformity by making it smaller. So therefore, a lot size variance or rezone and comp plan amendment would possibly be needed. There is floodplain on the property, covers approximately point three two acres in the extreme northeast corner of the property, and does not affect the proposed subdivision. The existing parent parcel takes access off of Kaputa and does have an existing single-family residence and onsite wastewater treatment system. The proposed tract, tract A, is, again, five acres, currently vacant of any structures. It is also zoned general agriculture districts, again, which has a forty-acre minimum, so it will require a lot size variance or a rezone and/or a comprehensive plan amendment in the future. The future land use is limited agriculture district, and even if the proposed five-acre lot size would not meet that requirement. There is no flood hazard area on this property. The applicant and the agents have worked with South Dakota Department of Transportation to gain, to have approved access off of Highway forty-four, but there are conditions with that that South Dakota Department of Transportation will oversee. If this lot sounds familiar, it's because they just received a conditional use permit sixteen thirty-one for their Raptor rehabilitation and education center. A quick history on that, it was approved by the planning commission on September twenty-six with thirteen conditions. It was appealed to the board of commissioners, and on October eighteenth, the board of commissioners upheld the planning commission's decision with the same thirteen conditions. One item of note that came back during the request for comment period was that West River Electric would like to see a twenty-five-foot easement to allow West River to gain access on the property for the utility lines. The applicant's request at this time does not appear to be in harmony with Pennington County's future land use designation. However, the future land use designation for the zoning and surrounding property shows an increase in, in low-density residential, and you also have the town of Kaputa just about a half-mile away with, which is suburban residential, and most of those lots are about point six acres, and they're asking for point five acres. Within one-half mile, there are four existing lots that are five acres or less, and they're zoned general agriculture, so there is some precedent for a lot size variance if they choose to take that route. For the purposes of layout plat, staff finds no issues with the applicant's request, as a layout plat is an informal preliminary review of the proposed subdivision for scope and conditions, and therefore, staff recommends approval of layout plat sixteen twenty-eight with fourteen conditions.
Questions for PJ?
So PJ can, where is the twenty-five-foot easement that the Black Hills Power is asking for?
I don't know. That will be up to the agent to come, to get with them and figure out where that needs to go. This is just a layout plat where they submit and then say, what do we need to do to go to the next step? And West River came back, that's one of the things they would like, because there hadn't been a proposed residence there before, so they're going to need to be able to gain access and provide them with the utility, so it's going to be a fresh easement.
So this is low-density residential?
No.
This is not, not them, but the area, that's general ag?
This is general ag. There is low-density residential. In your packets, I don't believe I threw it on the slide here, there should be a future land use.
Okay.
Which has, and it's not pictured, it's not on the screen, and there is a considerable amount of low-density residential.
Okay, so is the, and maybe you can answer this. So you have Kaputa half-mile away, you have people close to this, and this is low-density residential, and basically, it's a commercial business. Are birds going to be outside so they're noisy, or are these not noisy birds?
I don't know about the noise of the birds. I do know that they do have enclosures for the birds, and I don't know what the tops of them look like there is. Here's kind of a layout that was given to us some time ago. You can see there's kind of cages on that structure to the west there. I don't know what the noise level would be.
Depending on how many birds there is, I mean...
And that's going to be limited, and this was addressed during the conditional use permit, and that's going to be limited by their licenses with the other agencies.
I'd hate to have them not have that concern before they built all those buildings and all that property was already built, and then come back a year later and say, okay, you need to do something different, your birds in this area is low-density residential. And the rezoning would be, would be a good thing, so people that decided to move out in this area understood that this was general commercial more than it is general ag. Does that make sense?
Yes.
It gives people forewarning that this is general commercial or a business. Because if you, the future land use is low-density residential, you just put general commercial right in the middle of it, plus you put a bird sanctuary right in the middle of low-density.
The surrounding properties, most of them are low-density. This one specifically, the future land use is limited agriculture. But the lot size wouldn't meet the ten-acre minimum for that, so they'd most likely have to either get a lot size variance or rezone down to low-density to meet the three-acre minimum.
Right, so the future land use would pretty much tell you it's going to be, and wants to be, low-density residential.
And they are putting a residence on the property with future plans down the line of a possible second residence.
Yes.
Do you have the future land use?
I can get it for you. If it's not in your packets...
But their residences are a lot different because they own the property than the people that might build around it, so I'm not worried about them putting more residents. I'm, I'm asking that the rezone and, and this be appropriate for the surrounding area.
Uh huh.
It's not that they can't do what they want on their land, it's what's going to happen in the future around that land.
Little slow warming up this morning here.
And they're not here today?
Ron is.
Just the agent.
Ron, do you, you want to come to the podium?
Ron Davis, Davis Engineering.
Mr. Davis, is the sanctuary, is it enclosed? Are the birds so, you have, I think they said twenty birds, I can't remember exactly.
Yeah, it isn't very many. Yeah, I don't know. I've never seen this in operation. I don't know what they do. They're asking me to do a plat, and, but I've been working with them for quite a while now, and they're going to do it the right way. They absolutely do everything the right way. They meet all the state regulations, all, everything they can, so, I mean, that'll all be addressed and taken care of before this ever gets built.
Right, but we have...
They know what they're doing.
We have kennels, and we have animal shelters for other things, and doing it the right way is their passion, but you know what I'm saying, but if, if...
What do you mean by other things? These are only birds.
Yes.
Okay.
If they make any noise like other birds do, and they make noise all the time, that's a lot of noise.
I don't know. These are raptor-type birds, they're not songbirds. They don't sing.
Yeah, but a parakeet doesn't sing, but it squawks all the time.
Yeah, well, these don't...
But they aren't parakeets either. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, do these birds make a lot of noise, or they, they basically don't squawk a lot? Is that a good way to put it?
I have no idea.
My limited amount of interaction with raptors is they don't make a lot of noise. Their primary role is to be quiet so they can hunt.
Right.
And I've been around raptors in captivity and fed some for friends of mine, and I don't think I've ever once heard it do anything but chew the meat from my glove. That was it.
I guess that's, that's my bottom line. If they don't, then this, this isn't going to disturb anybody, it's not going to do anything. But that's why I guess I would like them to be here to answer those questions instead of a guy that's doing a plat instead of a bird sanctuary.
And the green is low, limited ag?
Correct. The light, the light green is general ag with a forty-acre minimum. The darker green is limited agriculture with a ten-acre minimum. The yellow is low-density residential, three-acre minimum, and then this subdivision of Kaputa down here, mostly suburban residential, can go down to sixty-five hundred square feet if conditions are right.
So we don't really have low-density, uh...
There's a, this is the future land use. There's low-density planned around it, but right now, it's limited agriculture. I can show you, I'll go back and forth between the two if I can here real quick.
Maybe it'd be better to do a lot size variance and leave it limited ag. I don't know. That's what we have to talk about when we get to the next steps. This is just a preliminary step to find out what we're going to be concerned with.
That's current. That's future.
And the bottom line is, is mostly on a highway, you would put commercial. I'm just going to say that.
Yeah.
So, but the main thing is, is if it's going to be a bird sanctuary and a commercial operation, maybe do it commercial so people know that for the future, not limited ag.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, sir.
Did you talk to Maggie before the meeting, tell her that it was probably going to be approved, and so that's why she didn't show up?
I don't know, she's usually pretty good about being here.
Yeah, she's really good about it, so I don't know why she isn't here.
Ron, maybe you could ask Deb's, answer Deb's first question about the Black Hills Power easement. Do you have any knowledge on that?
Oh, well, yeah, we, we knew they wanted an easement someplace. We didn't know how wide or, and now they're saying twenty-five feet. We'll put it wherever they want it. Leon Fenhaus that owns the twenty-eight acres, there's no problem putting an easement across there to this site. Yeah, we have, it's just a matter of getting it on the plat when we're deciding where they want it.
Other questions for Mr. Davis or PJ?
This will have a septic system?
Yes.
And, but the groundwater was pretty high, so it might have to be a mound system?
We may end up with a mound system. The groundwater down by the highway is only three and a half feet deep. The north end of the property up there where it says tract A is six feet or plus, so that's probably, we're probably going to end up with a drain field septic tank on the north end of the property with a pumping station to pump it up to it.
Do you mound septics when you have that much groundwater, like in Rapid Valley? Mr. Davis, does it actually work efficiently when you have that much groundwater?
Well, I'm sure it doesn't if the groundwater's up in the system, but if it's not, it should work fine, yeah.
Supposedly designed for evapotranspiration, that's in the mound.
Right, but you have the floodway by it, and then you have people saying that whole area is usually water.
But a mound system is above the natural ground.
Yeah, how, how high does it, I'm sorry, I don't know a lot about mound system. How high is a mound system?
Probably what? Brittany, four feet?
Yeah, three, three, four feet maybe. And you can build a mound system out in the parking lot, so it won't affect the groundwater at all. It's entirely lined and, yeah, it's a WIC system.
And it's high enough where the groundwater can't?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if we have to, yeah.
Other questions?
So the applicants are okay with the requirements set forth by the DOT with respect to the access points?
Yeah. This only happens if they do that, pretty much.
Okay.
Well, they've had a lot of discussions with them, and they've worked together on this to get what they wanted, so.
Yep.
Yeah, we're good.
I have no further questions.
Staff's recommendations for approval, anyone from the audience have any comments, questions? Staff's recommendation is for approval of layout plat PL sixteen dash twenty-eight with fourteen conditions. Entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve layout plat PL sixteen dash twenty-eight with fourteen conditions listed.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion?
I will, sorry, Sig, I would probably be saying no, but I will get ahold of the applicant so I know the information by the time I get to the county commission. I'm not against it, I just need more information.
And we'll make sure they're present at the next meeting, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Roll call?
Lori.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Deb.
No.
Sig.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Lindell.
Aye.
Motion carried, five to one.
Thank you.
Item 17. Sixteen. Sixteen, I missed, yep, I missed sixteen.
Good morning, Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item 16 is vacation of plat VP 1602. This is a request to vacate notes on the plat of Lot 10, Block 4 of Pahasapa High Country Track 2 subdivision. The applicants and owner of this property are John and Lorraine Baum. As this property exists today, it is Zone Low Density Residential District. It's 4.92 acres. It's currently vacant, and a creek passes through most of the property, as you can see on the screen up here. And the special flood hazard area is not studied, according to Rapid Map. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process, no significant issues came up. So basically, what they are requesting to do is vacate notes that were recorded on the plat that was recorded for this property on July 27th of 1978. When this property was platted, the property that you see on the screen here, Lot 10 of Block 4, was dedicated as a public recreation area. You can see it on the screen up here, here's Lot 10. So the property at that time was owned by the Homeowners Association. However, since the property was platted, the property was purchased by a private entity in a tax deed sale. It's since been purchased two or three times by private entities and is now owned by Mr. and Mrs. Baum. With the vacation of this, of the notes on this plat, the applicants are requesting to vacate the note that identifies Lot 10, Block 4 as a dedicated public recreation area, the plat note that states no building in this area along the border between Lot 10 and Lot 6. The applicants also own Lot 6, which is where their house is at. So as you can see in the pink here, this area right here is dedicated as a no-building in this area portion. They would like to vacate that. They would also like to vacate plat note nine, which would be right here on plat book 16, page 76. That note says pedestrian easements are hereby dedicated for public access to public recreation area shown here on. The pedestrian easements will no longer be required if the dedication of the public recreation area is removed. And they would also like to vacate plat note number 11, which says Lot 10, Block 4 shall be provided for recreational purposes and shall be controlled and maintained by the Property Owners Association for the use of all owners. Lot 10, Block 4 is no longer owned or maintained by the Property Owners Association or the Homeowners Association. The subject property does contain a creek, which would significantly limit, if not eliminate, buildability. However, since this lot is dedicated as a public recreation area, the applicants are currently holding private liability insurance on it. They are concerned that if somebody were to go over there with it being dedicated as a public recreation area and hurt themselves, they could then in turn come back on the person who owns it. So their main focus on trying to vacate this is so that they don't have to hold, or feel that they need to hold insurance on it anymore. And vacating the requested plat notes would not change the configuration, size, or layout of any of the lots within the Pahasapa High Country Track 2 subdivision. So staff is recommending approval of vacation of plat 1602 with two conditions.
Questions?
So Cassie, Nemo Road is in front of this plat, right?
Yes.
How far does that right-of-way go into that platted area? Isn't it, isn't there a certain amount of right-of-way that's dedicated for that road?
That road, let me see if I can see it on here.
This Nemo Road is there?
It looks like it's 66.
Yes, yep.
66 feet off of the road towards their property, Rich?
No, 66 feet about the centerline of the roadway.
Thirty, 33 on each side?
Yep.
And isn't there a right-of-way after that legally that they require?
Not typically on county roads, but I would let the county highway superintendent.
So it's just the state, 'cause I know the state has one. Trying to think if the city has a right-of-way too, 'cause your sidewalk is on your right-of-way.
No, up here, it would probably only be the 66-foot wide right-of-way since this was platted so long ago.
I didn't think you could build to a certain amount close to a road. Is it 25 feet, or Sig, do you know?
Well, section line, it varies whether it's a section line or just a property line.
Yeah. If they were to want to build anything on here, they would still have to meet the setbacks of a low-density residential district, which would be 25 feet from the property lines, but I, that would put you in the middle of the creek.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the creek is running through there, I just didn't know if, and they had to plot it if it was right-of-way anyway, but we're right here.
I've got a question, a couple of questions, I guess. Yeah, to me, it's in some ways unfortunate, or, you know, that, you know, if a person didn't pick up the tax deed, what would have happened to their property? Would it just become the county's property at that point?
Yes.
Well, and then I guess I have a little bit of concern about, you know, removing something that's a public recreation when the stream itself is waters of the state. It is, somebody could put a canoe down there, public does have access to the high-water level of the creek. So, I mean, removing that is kinda contradicting state law, isn't it? As far as, you know, you're saying the whole property, including the stream, you're now taking over rights that are rightfully the state's. So I don't know, taking that off, and secondly, I guess, or whatever, thirdly, whatever, the percent, you know, when this was platted, you know, sometimes there's a plating requirement of X number of acres needs to be dedicated as a park or a public property. Was that the case here? And I mean, and I don't know what the legal precedent is on that. I mean, if it was picked up in tax deed, does that still been a requirement? It was initial requirement that a certain amount of land be dedicated as public land? So, probably more a question for Kinsley.
True statement.
Kinsley Grohl from the State's Attorney's Office. I heard your question before, but I didn't hear the second one. So the first question as to whether this would contradict any sort of high-water mark, you know, public being able to use the creek? No, I mean, that would, that would trump anything if the plat was changed. So you don't have to worry about changing the plat and people's keeping their rights and the creek, so...
Well, the other question I had was more related to, and I, I don't know if the county ever had that, or I mean, I believe we have that now, where you plat something and, you know, X number of acres or a certain number of percent has to be dedicated as public park or, or, you know, public property. That's a lot of times you see that more in cities. And I didn't know at the time this was originally planted, if that was put on, and then whether you can, by this action, you can override that.
We do require common area on larger PUD and subdivisions. With as old as this is and the way that they've been developing this, I don't know if that is even possible now.
Well, I'm not, not sure it's possible either, with the situation of somebody purchasing and their tax defaulting, so...
But it is, but dedicating common area is a common occurrence.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Lori?
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Lori.
Do I understand correctly that at one point in time, this property was owned by the homeowners?
You may have to speak up a little bit, they're having...
At one point in time, was this property owned by the homeowners association?
I believe so.
Yes.
Yes, at one point in time it was.
So they have basically said that they do not want this anymore as a recreational area?
That's my understanding, that the homeowners association is still intact, but they let this go to tax deed and have no desire to maintain it or own it at this point, is my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, can I have the owner come up for a sec? Thank you.
Good morning.
How are you, sir?
John Baum, this is my wife Lori. We purchased the property in May of this year.
Sir, do you have any, what's your intentions on the land, are you just...
We just wanna clean it up, fix the fence, and keep it mowed. It is, I, we both believe that it's not buildable. So we just wanna just maintain it, keep it nice and clean.
It's by your house, is it, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's more or less would be the back view of our house.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Other questions for the applicant? Lori, did you have anything for the applicant?
No.
Okay.
And then also, one more comment. We do understand the, the rules and the laws about public fishing.
Water right-of-way.
The water right-of-way and everything like that.
Okay.
We do understand that, yes.
And we also agreed that all the neighboring properties, if they want to fish it, is fine with us.
Just ask permission.
And clean up your trash.
Yeah.
And I don't believe, because it would be waters of the state, I, you know, just like any other waters of the state, I don't think you would have to carry the liability insurance that you're now covering to protect yourself, so...
Correct.
It's my understanding, so...
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yeah, Rich.
One of, one of the things that was highlighted on, on one of the plats is it says that no building in this area, it's highlighted in kind of a magenta color.
Mm-hmm.
So you guys want that removed from the plat as well? Is that a true statement?
Let's see, the no-building is...
Yes, because it, it's not buildable anyways.
I think in that area, it's either, it was either a ramp that they cut to come down...
That's the fire exit.
Oh, that's a fire exit, yes.
That's the fire exit.
There is a emergency fire escape at the end for the people that live on that end of the subdivision to cross the creek and get out.
Well, and Rich, if, maybe, you're probably, are you asking why vacate that part if you think it's not buildable anyway?
Correct.
Okay, we thought it was where the ramp is, right behind our house, 'cause there is quite a difference in, in elevation to where they, the people used to be able to walk down. That's where I thought the no-building area was.
Oh, okay.
So is this still an access for people to get out, is it...
Right, we do want that left.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I thought you were vacating.
No, no.
Okay.
And I do believe it's 25 foot on each side of the lot line. 25 foot on Lot 10 and 25 foot on the other lot.
Elsie.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yep, it's 25 feet along either side of the lot line separating Lot 8, Block 6 from Lots 9 and 10 of Block 4. So it's right here. On this picture, it would be right there.
And there's no change to that?
No.
You can see the fire, the, the road right in there, yes.
So hopefully, they don't have to escape when the creek's high.
Yes, hopefully not.
Any other questions for Cassie or the applicant? Staff's recommendation is for approval of vacation of plat PL 16-02 with two conditions. Entertained the motion? Lori?
Mr. Chair. Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Lori.
Yeah, would, would the owner be agreeable to leaving that no-building statement on the plat?
Yes.
Did you hear that, Lori?
Yes.
Okay.
What's that? Yeah, it's in that, um...
Yeah.
PJ, did you have a...
Just confirming something with Cassie before...
Okay. Lori, did you wanna make a motion to that effect with the change of that vacation?
Sure, I would move for approval of vacation of plat VP 1602 with the two conditions, and I guess exclusive of, I don't know exactly how to word it, so that the, the no-building condition remains.
That to the plat, no, no building in this area along the northern border of Lot 6, Block 4?
Yes.
Will you remain in place? Is that your motion?
Yeah, that would be plat, I was just looking back and seeing what note...
Do you understand that, and you're fine with that?
Yes.
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 Sig, just a question before you do that. Does it have to be on the deed or on the plat? Or is that the same?
What do you mean?
Well, it should be on the plaques, isn't it?
I'll second the motion.
It would be on the plat.
Discussion, yeah, yeah, it should be on the plat.
It is on the plat, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So if it comes up to us, it'll say on there, no build easement?
Yeah, yep, though, these notes will stay on this plat, all of these notes, but then there'll be another document that's filed at the Register of Deeds vacating the certain plat notes, and that one will stay.
With a no-build easement on it?
Yes, that will stay, mm-hmm.
Sorry.
Is that clear to everyone? Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call?
Lori.
Yes.
Rich.
Aye.
Deb. Sig.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
And Lindell.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 17.
All right, item 17 is a minor planned unit development amendment request, PU 1606. This is a request to amend the existing Trailwood Village planned unit development to allow for a home occupation, an in-home licensed massage therapy business on the subject property. The applicant on this is Tina Collins. As this property exists today, it is zoned, planned unit development lies within the Trailwood Village PUD, which the latest amendment to that was 05-19. It is 0.19 acres, access is off of Cottage Court, and the lot currently contains a single-family residence and a detached garage. This property is serviced for onsite wastewater disposal by the Rapid Valley Sanitary District. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process. The only comments of concern that came back were questions from the ordinance enforcement officer and also the county fire administrator, asking if any signage would be used. The applicant did indicate to staff that at this time, there would be no signage indicating that a home occupation is taking place on the property. This minor amendment was applied for on October 21st. On October 27th is when staff spoke with the applicant about the signage on the property. And per documents submitted by the applicant, hours of operation for this in-home massage business would be from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. by appointment only, with no more than one client per hourly session. She has indicated that she will be the only employee, so there will be no additional employees on the property. She is proposing to have the clients park in her driveway to the right of the mailbox, so they would be parking over in here, in her existing driveway. She has provided a copy of her massage therapist license that was issued by the South Dakota Department of Health, the Board of Massage Therapy. This license is valid until September 30th, 2017. And at the time of this staff report, staff has not received any complaints regarding the subject property or the proposed home occupation. I do wanna mention that there is a little bit of a precedence for stuff like this within the Trailwood Village PUD. There is at least one other home occupation that I know of within the Trailwood Village PUD, where a gal is running a in-home salon. So there is a little bit of precedence for something along these lines. So staff is recommending approval of minor planned unit development amendment 1606 with 14 conditions.
Has this operated, been in operation in the past, or is this just proposed operation?
This is just a proposed operation right now.
Any questions for Cassie?
The applicant coming forward, not really for Cassie, 'cause a lot of people just do this and ask forgiveness later. So I appreciate that the applicant's telling the neighbors and the people around her that she is gonna do massage, it also, it's not gonna hurt her massage business for them knowing, but I appreciate that.
I do, too. I mean, I, my question was, that's why I was kinda wondering if this was generated through a complaint.
Nope.
Okay.
Nope, she came forward with this on her own.
The applicant is here. Do you have any, you wanna come up to the podium, please? Any questions for the applicant? And I guess, secondly, do you underst, have you seen all the conditions, and are you fine with the conditions?
Are you okay with all the conditions, Senator?
Yes, I am. I was working in a salon setting at one time, and I'm better off working by myself, for myself, and my clients seem to like the personal home touch. They don't have to go out and see other people in the salon after they got their hair messed and everything. They're relaxed, I give them a cup of coffee or water or anything before they leave, you know? Just kinda make it feel the comforts of home in a, in a relaxing setting, so...
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion is for approval of minor planned unit development 16-06 with 14 conditions.
So moved. I'd like to approve minor plat, planned unit development amendment PU 16-6 with 14 amendments.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call?
Lori.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Deb.
Aye.
Sig.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
And Lindell.
Aye.
Thank you.
I guess, item eight... Take us to item eighteen, county board report.
Okay, a long one. Number eighteen, county board report, the Board of Commissioners will hear the November fourteenth Planning Commission's recommendations at the December sixth, two thousand sixteen Board of, Board meeting end. There's notes, item number one, second reading and planning unit development sixteen oh three for Dan and Nancy Evangelisto. The first reading was approved by the Board of Commissioners on November first, two thousand first, two thousand sixteen. The second reading will be heard at the December sixth, two thousand sixteen Board of Commissioners meeting, and that is at the applicant's request. Item two, second reading of ordinance amendment sixteen oh one, basically the vacation home ordinance. The first reading was approved by the Board of Commissioners November first, two thousand sixteen. Second reading was heard by the Board on November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, with recommended changes and the, and the second reading was also continued to December sixth, two thousand sixteen Board of Commissioners meeting. The Board and Planning Commission will be getting copies of that final ordinance amendment this week. Item number three, appeal of conditional use permit sixteen sixteen for Carrie and Deborah Kasubi to allow commercial storage rental and painting business in a suburban residential district. The Board of Commissioners upheld the Planning Commission's decision to deny without prejudice CUP sixteen sixteen, and to also allow the applicant a year within which to work with the renters and rental contractors. Essentially, he can't, is not supposed to be renting out storage units or doing any commercial activity on the property for the next year. So through attrition, what's there now is no new leases, so they'll have to find new places to go. However, the applicant is allowed to come back within a year and reapply for the activity that he requested.
We got a, especially since we got two county planning commissioners here. On number two is, I understand that it stands right now, the proposals for suburban residential, if it's one acre or larger. Is there also any separation that was discussed?
Separation.
Between, like, a house could be within eight, eight feet of the lot line. So you, in theory, you could have two houses, it could be on an acre lot, but the houses could be sixteen feet apart.
Not at the last meeting.
Okay.
No, there's been a considerable amount of that discussion during the committee meetings, planning commission meetings, and the first board meeting, I think, but no one could come up with an idea of what a proper distance would be. Staff had come up with the idea of just going with the state definition, if you have the one acre and you're able to basically be self-contained, so you have the private or the shared systems, and that's what we went with, because figured we'll offer something.
Well, like I said, that's, to me, it makes some logic for that, but I mean, still could have two houses sixteen feet apart, one being a rental, you know, vacation home rental, and the other one not, so.
You could, especially in a couple of planning.
I didn't know.
In a couple of planning developments, they say that.
I didn't get a chance to watch the video, but I did read the minutes, our draft minutes, and I didn't see any discussion on the.
Right, and, and with, with that provision, if it was to pass, and even now, even though it's excluded in suburban residential, anybody can request a variance to those ordinances and come in and request it. So even if that does get put in place, someone who has less than one acre can come in and ask for a variance to that rule if it passes.
Any other questions for PJ regarding the county board report?
No.
Item nineteen, items from the public. Hearing none, items from staff, comprehensive plan.
As you know, Matrix Design Group was approved by the Board of Commissioners as the consultant group we're going with, and just yesterday at seven thirty-two PM, Rick Russ sent me a draft of the contract, so that will be reviewed by staff and then also the state's attorney's office and figure out what the best course of action after that is.
Thank you for that update.
Second, what you'll see next meeting are the draft proposals for ordinance amendments for the alternative energy for wind and solar. So those will be coming out also prior to the meeting for you to review, they'll be coming out this week, because it's a considerable amount of pages to read. And then one more item, since we're getting towards the end of the year, we always like to ask as far as the style of the staff reports, if they have the information that you like, if you like to see something different, take some stuff out. We're trying to make the staff reports smaller by putting pictures in the staff report, so we don't have to produce an entire sheet of, towards the end as a, an addition or an amendment. So just looking for some feedback, it doesn't have to be today, it could be, we could do it and talk about it in December.
Well, and I think it's been at least a year, but I guess I appreciate that we are getting some color in this, you know, especially on some of the zoning stuff, and sometimes when we were just getting black and white copies, it was hard to see or hard to understand the legend. And so I do appreciate that, I mean, I know that's additional expense to the county, but I do appreciate when it's appropriate to have the color pictures in there, so.
Okay.
I don't know, but be, just to cut down volume and that, whether, well, that's assuming you have it. I, I guess the pictures take up a lot of, both file size wise and all that, or whether you can do a link to photos rather than actually publishing the pictures, because I'm sure, you know, when you have, I don't, didn't have too many this time, but I like, you know, the maps being in color, but I mean, like, when you just got pictures of the house or the lot from different angles or something like that, takes up, you know, cost and, cost and size of the files. I don't know, there's some way to do, do, anybody that really wants to see that, to go to a link.
Yeah, well, we're always looking at, trying to make them as small as possible and save staff time, save money. So any ideas? It's always an evolving process. We started this, I think, what, two years ago? Maybe it was kind of getting out of the paragraph form of staff reports, and just kind of, here's the facts, Jack.
Anyone else have any immediate comments?
I, I think the pictures always help a significant amount in telling the story, especially if the topography isn't included. So if it's just a, you know, you're, you're looking at a zoning map, it doesn't really tell you a whole lot. I, I tend to read the analysis very, very specifically, and that's where I'm, I'm looking for things. So if you guys could continue to hit on items that would, if this is approved, it will need X, Y, and Z. Those are key things that I highlight and, and review as I'm going through them. I don't necessarily read every single item in the general description where, especially if they've come back like six times and there's five pages of repeated conditions. I'm always looking for the changes and what's triggering this event, and what they're asking, and how that will affect things moving forward. So I guess those would be my general comments, but I, I think the pictures are worth the money to print.
We appreciate that. The way we look at this, not only are we trying to make it so, we do this every day, so we understand what's in here. So we try to make it so the public understands it as well. We also view the staff reports as historical documents, so we're taking that extra time to do that extra research to put that four or five pages of history in. So next time this comes back, the next staff member doesn't have to do that. So we're, it's an investment of time, so it's a little bit more on us right now, but we're hoping five, ten years, it'll save some time down the road.
And I agree with Rich, because I don't do the, I don't look on the computer for this program, I look at the book. So I appreciate the pictures, too.
Well, I appreciate it, but I just, I guess I'm thinking costs. I know the color photos are quite a bit more expensive than a black and white piece, so.
And the PowerPoints, I didn't bring that up. They're slightly different now, we're putting, you know, the site plan as the first slide, and then we're combining slides. Just, again, this isn't going to cost any money, but it's just making it better instead of flipping, we're trying to flip less.
And the future land use is always nice on it when you're making a decision, map on there, and then the pictures of the property. If there's a topography where you know you can't build and you see, you know, it's a nice, so people can actually get the full picture of that property when it drops off, when they say there's only ten feet or twenty-five feet of buildable lot, it's nice to see those pictures of, you know, because I've seen people say it's not buildable and then end up being built on.
Well, I think the information you're providing is, is very good and thorough. I guess, personal preference, I would almost like, here's the application, then the pictures and the plats and all that, and then get into the report. So I mean, I have a visual picture, I mean, I could always flip to the back.
To like reverse the start, the.
That's a good point, Sig.
The order?
Yeah. That's a personal preference on my part, I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but I mean, like, I'd almost like to see the, the plating and the layout and the pictures first, and then start reading on what they want, you know.
They do that. They, well, they do that in the city, and I think they used to do it here. I used to go to the meetings for like a year, and I remember Dan showing the picture and then talking about the, the property. So that might make it a lot easier, PJ, as well, because they do that in the city. If you watch, they talk about all the report that they have put down, you know, and the easement and everything with the pictures.
Okay.
And the future land use. That way, I think you'll cut down on our questions, too.
Okay.
I still think your first sheet would be just like you have at the, you know, the data.
Yep.
You know, it's, here's what it is, lot size, who's doing the report, and then, anyway, like I said, my personal preference, and then present the maps and pictures, and then talk about the, their, the issue. Instead of reading about the issue and then flipping to the back.
Yeah, yep, okay. We'll discuss that at a staff meeting, see what we can do for you.
Did you have another planning commission next? When's your next planning?
December twelfth.
December fifth and December nineteenth. And the nineteenth is at two o'clock.
Well, we're having, remember our employee?
Oh, yes, December ninth.
Yes.
The employee pot, the potluck.
And we'd like to invite the planning commissioners. And that's from eleven to one, or eleven to two, Jerry, do you remember?
I, off the top of my head, I don't.
And what you do is you just come, and then we have food and games, and then you, it's a potluck, so you can bring whatever you want. And it's kind of fun, and it's, the food is always awesome.
We'll send stuff out.
Yeah, we'll send the invite out that came from HR.
That was the ninth, you said?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
It's a Friday. Travis, Travis can bring those chickens or turkeys, so he took care.
Just keep in mind, though, that means planning commission is next week.
Yeah.
There's not a gap. For those that are new to the board, the commission, there used to be only one meeting in December, but there was a couple of times we ran into a few items where people were going to have to wait almost six weeks to be heard, so we started bringing those before the Board of Commissioners. And recently, the commission decided to do two meetings in December. And if there's not any items for the meeting on the nineteenth, then there's not any items,